On that case, call the meeting to order. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, October 3rd, 2019, time is 7:00 PM. Please call the roll.
President Self.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Hammond.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Village Manager Frances.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Kaylee and Trustee Jisa is not with us this evening.
Thank you very much. Please join us for the pledge.
With the name and to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you to those who are in attendance and to those watching at home. If you are here with us this evening and you'd like to address the board, I ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up tonight is public comment. Would anyone like to address the board? Yes, sir.
I would serve my last twenty minutes.
Please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a veteran six-year military veteran. I've lived in the village for more than sixty years. I had two complaints that I lodged on August the 5th with the village against some property owners, and I was informed today that both of those complaints will not be acted upon. And I'd like to explain what those were and what they told me. The one complaint was on lighting on the side of their homes. They had two cylindrical lights pointing directly at my planning room and bedroom that we have very little space on West of First Avenue, less than fifteen feet from my house and less than ten feet from the property line. The village went out and had the police department measure the light at the fence and said there was no light at the fence. But yet my bedrooms are lit at daytime. So anyway, I'm accepting the decision of the village for now, but I would ask the village that I be able to go to the zoning board, speak with them about the futures of lighting in Riverside. Because when I pulled the exterior lighting code 10-7-2, I don't see anything in there about modern LED lights, and that's what was on the house next to me. And of course, they're much brighter and they... And just to tell you, when you read them, and I had an electrician explain to me everything, that when you read LED lights, there are different frequency of the incandescent and fluorescent lights, so they may show differently on light meters. So that's my one comment on that. The second issue is a complaint about the neighbor digging up my property. Along my fence, they dug up my property, dug under my fence the property, put stones, wood, all kinds of things. I call the village. They'd done the same thing several years ago, and the village told them, "Don't do that anymore." And they told me today, and we already, in 2004, already defined the property lines. There's no overlapping properties. The village came out at that time and measured and said, "Here's the property lines." I put my fence in deliberately, a nice cedar fence that's four inches thick, four or five inches away from the property line, and the village told me today that's a private mandate, and I should sue them or do whatever I need to do for the village. They're not going to do anything for me. So that's my comments. I don't know if anybody wants to ask me questions or anything, and I know it's just a comment time, so that's it.
We can certainly have staff take a look at the lighting regulations to see what surrounding communities are doing.
Yeah, it's 10-7-2.
Yeah, I made a note of that.
Yeah, and if they want help, I think Mr. Pollak is on the zoning board, and I'd be more than happy to work with you. I'm an electronics guy, so you know, if you need something. I just feel like, you know, my bedroom... I mean, I'm going to get heavy shades to put there, but it's unfortunate. And it's unfortunate about the land being dug up, and I'm going to have to address that with a lawyer because the village says that's a dispute, property dispute, that I don't believe that it is, but it's okay. So anyway, I hope in the future you look at the veterans and sixty-year seniors and see if you can do something for us in the future.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for your service to our country.
Thank you.
Next up are reports of village officers. I have a report this evening. Manager?
I have one quick report. I just want to notify residents that at the next board meeting, there will be a public hearing for the bond issuance. It will be with regard to the one point, an amount not to exceed 1.515 million for the general obligation limited tax bonds. If you recall, we had discussed this with regard to resurfacing of Selbourn. So we have to conduct our public hearing and then follow that process thereafter. That is all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Next up is the approval or consent agenda. On the agenda this evening, approve the voucher list of bills for October 3rd, 2019. Approve the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of September 19, 2019. Review and file the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting and Public Hearing Meeting Minutes of August 28th, 2019. An ordinance amending Chapter 23 of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside relative to representation municipal ordinance violation hearings. A resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $79,500 for Christopher V. Burke Engineering to provide professional engineering services as part of the reconstruction and resurfacing of Selbourn Road and Parkway Road. A resolution approving Coonley and Northgate Court Water Main's replacement project change order number one in the amount of $13,456.80. And lastly, a resolution approving Coonley and Northgate Water Main Replacement Project Change Order Number Two in the amount of $12,400. Does anyone need anything removed to be discussed?
Yeah, can you pull their minutes out, please?
Yes. Then we'll come back to those. So I'd ask for a motion of second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C... No, item B.
I will strongly make that motion.
Mr. Gallagos?
Second.
And Ms. Peters, please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. We'll return now to item C, review and file... I'm sorry. Item B, approve the Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes of September 19, 2019. Trustee Evans.
I would just like to make a small revision on the last page in the second paragraph. It's just a change from trustee Evans asked if the board had decided on expanding the existing business to trustee Evans asked if the board would make the decision between expanding.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments about that? I'd ask for a motion of second to approve item B.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
And Ms. Evans, please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons. Are there any liaison reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First, an ordinance approving a special use for government offices and an indoor recreation facility at 43 East Quincy Riverside, the Riverside Parks and Recreation Department Director Act.
Yes, the village is proposing to relocate the Parks and Recreation Department's administrative offices from the water tower to the location of 43 East Quincy and creating an indoor recreation facility for programming with a multipurpose room on the main level of that building. The property is owned B2 mixed-use periphery, and currently the zoning code classifies both government offices and recreation indoor or outdoor as special uses in the B2 mixed-use periphery subdistrict. Surrounding properties, we have both single-family and commercial zoning immediately adjacent to it. The department's hours of operations are typically 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Evening programs are at various times. Saturday programs are typically held no earlier than 9:00 AM and no later than 3:00 PM, and there's no programming proposed for Sundays. The property does have an off-street parking lot, which contains ten spaces, including one handicap accessible parking space, and the department does not plan on any other exterior changes or additions to the building at this time. The Planning and Zoning Commission conducted their public hearing and reviewed the special use requests at their September 25th meeting. They had some questions about vehicle equipment and storage, as well as any proposals to the exterior of the building. Director Malkiotti noted that the only vehicle they anticipate storing outside would be our 15-passenger van that we have. Everything else would be stored inside of the building, and at this time, there's no exterior changes proposed for the building. There was also some questions from the neighbor about the trees on the property, and at this time, there's no plans to take out those trees. So the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the special use permits. You have the findings of fact from that meeting before you, as well as an ordinance that approves the special uses for both government offices and indoor/outdoor recreation.
I'd ask for a motion of second to approve an ordinance approving a special use for government offices and an indoor recreation facility at 43 East Quincy.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
By Mr. Pollak. Questions, discussion? Please call the roll.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Hannan?
And I apologize for my lack of organization. Somewhere in here, there was a mention about moving Toucha Truck over to Quincy, or did I dream that?
Oh, yes. One of the neighbors had asked what events were planned to move to that location, and Director Malkiotti noted that the only planned move would be the Toucha Truck event to that location, just to free up any conflicts with Fire Station Number Two, and I'm sure he can elaborate on that.
I mean, I'd love to hear. Mr. Pollak?
Good evening.
Sure.
Of the events that we have right now, that's the easiest to move, as I stated at the Planning and Zoning meeting. Closing Pine Avenue is a bit problematic with the fire station right there. It's also a major cut-through for traffic and train crossing. So while we don't have any elaborate events set now that would impact that area, that's the one that I could see moving. It's from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, so it's during normal business hours. We could utilize the parking lot as well as some of the street, and I think we could close Quincy easier than Pine and hopefully work with those businesses to get cooperative efforts during that event as well.
The parking lot is... seems kind of small for the Toucha Truck. I had the same... That was my reaction when I...
We'd have to use both, but we could definitely put some vehicles in the parking lot and play off the building.
And I guess my concern is the impact on residents. You know, I think there's sort of a dual issue here. You know, number one, with the increased traffic for the classes, which I think is, you know, comes with the territory of living next to a commercial building. You know, that's something that, you know, you sort of buy into when you buy next to a building like that. I'm not quite sure, you know, they bought into having, you know, a number of trucks, you know, parked on their street, blocking off the street, albeit once or twice a year. So I, you know, what I liked about having it on Pine is that it's, you know, relatively few single-family houses, if any, and, you know, the disruption, you know, was, I think, no different than normal traffic on Pine as far as the congestion and from there. But had that concern, I... My preference would be to keep it on Pine, but, you know, if there's a safety concern, you know, I will defer to the experts on that.
Certainly opened a discussion. That was just the event when asked. That was the only one we could foresee moving, but the bottom line is, we want to be good neighbors, so I have yet to meet with the businesses. I'd like to meet with the businesses. There was a... Our direct next-door neighbor was at the Planning and Zoning meeting, so I had an opportunity to talk to them. So impact to the community is definitely something we gauge with all our events, and this would be no different. So it's certainly valid and worth of discussion.
That would be great. I think that good neighbor approach is paramount.
Other comments? Discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries. Next is a resolution providing for and requiring the submission of a binding public question limiting the terms of office for the President and Board of Trustees in the Village of Riverside to appear on the ballot of the electors of the village at the general primary election to be held on March 17, 2020. Manager Frances?
Thank you. If you recall, on April 18th, 2019, the village board had approved a referendum question as it relates to term limits. Since that point in time, on July 19th, 2019, the General Assembly has passed a public act that basically our referendum, as it's currently presented, would not be in line with that. And so we need to make modifications to the referendum as outlined within the Agenda History Sheet that it cannot be retroactive. It has to be prospective with regard to the term limits. And this impacts communities. It applies to all referendum questions after November 16, 2016. So it's not just those that may have pending referendums. It actually goes back to those that already have approved ones back to 2016. So the village attorney has made those modifications, and they're in the board packet for review and discussion if you have any questions.
And just to follow up, I spoke with Mr. Malina before the meeting. So the effect of this would be the prior referendum has already been sent to the clerk, county clerk. If we pass this tonight, this in effect repeals the prior referendum, and then this is the question that would be sent to the clerk to be on the ballot. The only other... Before I ask for a motion of second, the only other thing that I would urge the board to consider is it currently is set up to be at the primary election on March 17th, 2020. Given that this goes to our structure of government, I would suggest having it placed on the November election, the general election in 2020. It would have no practical effect, except that it would ensure a larger voter turnout for the question. So that would be my only other suggestion with regard to this. So if you'd like to talk about it a little bit first, and then we can get a motion on the floor. Any comments?
Sorry. So it wouldn't have an effect because the next trustee or president election is 2021. Is that your point? Okay.
Right. It would be in effect in either...
It goes into effect immediately?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Mr. Pollak?
As I said at the April board meeting, when we discussed this and that previous resolution was approved, I'm generally opposed to term limits because I think that we have a problem recruiting and getting people to volunteer for these positions. And anything that restricts the pool of candidates for this position is... I don't see that as beneficial to the village, and term limits obviously restricts the pool of candidates who can run in any given election. Having said that, I did vote in favor of the resolution because I wanted to mitigate the impacts, and I agreed to a three-term limit. But again, I did that only because I thought it was going to be approved anyway, and I wanted to reduce the breadth of the referendum. So if any of the new trustees are willing to offer an opinion, I'd love to hear what the consensus of the board is now regarding term limits in general.
Anyone else have anything to say?
You first.
Mr. Gallagos?
Yeah, I've never really been in favor of having term limits at this level of government. I can see why we would want to have at state, county, and above. If we wanted to, we could take it off the ballot altogether, couldn't we?
Yes.
Well, the intention of the referendum that was passed initially is gone, so this is basically a brand-new referendum question. Because the old question was, you know, retroactive. So I feel like it's something new that I'm being presented with, and I don't particularly feel that term limits are the best for voters. I think that voters can decide at every election whether they want someone to stay or go. And so I'm just generally not for term limits.
Stan?
You know, I followed the discussion on term limits from the prior board very closely and, you know, saw where it evolved, and, you know, trustee Evans notes that, you know, there's a discussion, large discussion, on was it... You know, do you count time already served you not? You know, the Illinois Legislature solved that issue for us, so we have to take that discussion off the ballot. But, you know, I think we need to put some perspective on what this term limits does. It's twelve consecutive years as somebody on trustee, twelve consecutive years for somebody as village president. And, you know, my thought is, if we were talking about four years, maybe even eight years, I can understand the arguments that we want people to, you know, not dilute the pool, not eliminate people from the pool. But if you've sat in this seat for twelve years, you know, my view is it's time to step aside and let sort of a new voice, new vision come in, you know, both at the trustee level and at the president level. You know, our village is unique. You know, I think a lot of the governance, you know, somebody wants to step up, and, you know, most people will say, you know, "Good for you. Thanks for volunteering." You know, sometimes there's a contested election, sometimes there's not, but, you know, nobody wants to be the bad guy either. You know, "He's doing a great job. He's been in place. It's been... The village has been healthy and happy. Why make the change?" I think that leads us, again, with twelve years of that, you know, the world changes over twelve years, different views come into play, and I think it's healthy for the village not to have a stagnant board where all, you know, say all of us here are here for the next twelve years. I mean, we're not bringing new views. We're sort of stuck in our ways, and the village isn't going to grow and expand. There's not going to be new voices. So, you know, I want to respect with what the board did, albeit changed by the Illinois Legislature, and I'd rather just, you know, pass this as passed by the prior board and approve what's on here.
Peters?
Yeah, so when this issue first came up, I had been torn too. I truly believe we need good talent on this board, and I don't think we have enough people vying for those positions. But we did debate this extensively, and I agree that while some of the debate might have been related to retroactive versus prospective, the majority of it was related to, "Do we have term limits? How long should they be? Who should they apply to?" And I want to respect what we decided back then. I think that the Illinois General Assembly... Is that who did it? They have kind of taken one of the main issues that I struggled with off the table, so I can... I feel like I'm more able to say and put my weight behind term limits as they stand now or how they would be standing with the lack of retrospective effect. So I would be in favor with proceeding with the term limit referendum as drafted, but with that perspective, with it being prospective as opposed to the retrospective, which we can't do anyway.
So we're in a complicated situation because trustee Jisa is not here, and I suspect trustee Jisa... Actually, I don't know what trustee Jisa would say about this, whether he would... I don't know what he would say. But I don't feel comfortable moving this forward without a full board. I mean, if I'm going to be put into a position where I have to break a tie, then I think that it's only appropriate that we have a full board present for that to happen. I will say that I agree with trustee Pollak. I do not see a need for term limits in Riverside because of the volunteer nature of this board. There's no money involved. There's no significant fundraising that's involved. I don't see how an incumbent has really any advantage over somebody coming in. The, you know, the possibility of 12 and 12 that Mr. Hannan lays out would only occur if the people in the village voted for that person for that amount of time. Having said all that, at the last discussion we had about this, it was a compromise that we reached, and I made it clear at that time, because one of the concerns that the people who reached the compromise had was that this newly constituted board would go back and overturn the compromise that had been reached by the prior board. I made clear that I would not do that. So if I'm put in a position where I have to break a tie, I'm going to vote to have the term limits because that was the... That's the agreement that I made with the prior board. So we can postpone this until Mr. Jisa is here. If it's a tie vote, I will vote to have what you're looking at now, or we can go ahead and vote tonight and pass it tonight. I understand the desire as representatives to have your vote recorded and heard, so I respect that. So I will leave it up to you, the trustees, to decide whether you would like to take a vote this evening or if someone would like to move... Actually, we don't have a motion, so we don't have to table at this point, right? If we just have a consensus, we can wait and have this come back to us at our next meeting when we have a full board, so.
I mean, we've taken action with less than all trustees present before. We have a quorum. This was noticed. I just don't see a need to do this, but, you know, I'd love to hear input from my fellow trustees. I think it's, you know, it's on the agenda. Everybody had noticed. I'm not sure.
Well, if I read correctly what's being said, if there's a vote now, this is not going to pass. Now, which raises the other question of, we then have an existing referendum question with the clerk that's illegal.
Right. Well, so right now, if the vote was three to two, it would not pass. However, because three are in favor, you could vote.
I think... No, I think there's three... I think there are three votes here that do not want term limits.
Oh, I got it. No, I understand that. Right.
So what happens then if the board votes tonight to not have term limits? What happens to the referendum that's on file with the clerk?
Well, it would stay there for now, but it could always be brought back when there's a full board. I mean, to me, it makes sense to have it queued up so that you can make a final decision.
So just so I'm clear, we're voting on either... We've already submitted the what we'll call non-conforming ballot referendum. So if this doesn't pass, we have non-conforming ballots, as Attorney Malina said. Is that... Do I understand that correctly?
Right. And then so then the question would be, if we have a non-conforming question sitting there, would there then have to be a vote to repeal that prior referendum?
If there was no... This would effectively repeal.
But if this is not approved...
Right.
If this is not approved tonight, so basically you have a majority of the board sitting here that don't want term limits. So that's not approved. We then have a non-conforming referendum with the clerk.
Which we have now, right.
What do we have to do about that? Do we have to repeal that?
Yeah, well, I mean, that's kind of... That's kind of an open question. If the referendum appears on the ballot and it won, the law makes it clear what happens then, which is that there would be term limits, but they wouldn't be retroactive. The legislature has said it would have some effect. The only problem with that is, from a voter's standpoint, it's not the most accurate referendum because it purports to ask something that the voters really don't have the power to do in part, and it could potentially change the outcome. There might be people who would vote for term limits if it wasn't prospective, but won't if it is. So it seems to me it's best to be clear and have it be accurate, but I think if it stayed on the books as it is, it could go forward and not be completely illegal potentially. It's not the greatest situation, and somebody might try to challenge it, saying that after this law, it should have been altered, but it, you know, the law simply says there's no retroactivity, and it applies to term limits that have already been imposed. So that's why we know it would still have some effect. But it could also be brought back when you do have a full board. But it could also be brought back when you do have a full board, like, could be a vote tonight, and then staff could bring it back.
Could bring existing one back, or this one back.
This one back, yeah, there's no, there's no bar, like, in a zoning case where if something fails, it can't come back for a year or something like that. This is something where if you don't have a full board, staff could bring it back.
Mr. Pollak first.
It seems to me that we should, I'd say should all agree, that the referendum, or the, the resolution that was approved by the prior board needs to be eliminated, because it is contrary to state law. We have to look at it in its totality, it's contrary to state law, it would be irresponsible of us not to remove that from consideration. I would suggest we do that tonight, and if a trustee or the village president wants a new resolution to be considered by the board, we, they suggest, they ask that that be put on the next agenda, or an upcoming agenda, and we consider that. Same thing as tabling it, basically, but I think that's a more, to me, that's a more proper way to do it, because we eliminate the corrupt, if you will, referendum resolution, and we start over with a new one if someone, if there's a consensus to do that.
Stan? I, I guess I'm confused by Mr. Pollak's statement. I heard Attorney Molina explain to us that if the existing memorandum, existing ballot passed as originally drafted by the prior board, it would just be enforced in a conforming nature. So it would just have to be prospectively, basically what this says here.
That's my best.
So I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to say that we have an illegal question on the referendum.
Well, what I said, that's, that's my belief, but it, I also said somebody might try to argue that the referendum question was inappropriate, because it wasn't consistent with state law. But I do think if it passed, on balance, because of the way the law does apply retroactively, retroactively in a double sense, to existing referenda that have passed, the better argument would be it does have effect. But, but then I also said, I think the better, the better approach is to have it be accurate.
Right, but so, and, and I guess my second question is, what's on the agenda is to approve this language. I didn't see anything on the agenda about undoing the prior resolution, so I'm, I'm not quite sure we can vote on that.
And that's a separate question. So my advice would be kind of, you're, you, you have to kind of bring it back anyway, because if the, if the consensus of the board is that no matter what, we want to repeal the existing ordinance that was passed, whatever we do, we would have to bring that back anyway to have it be final. I, I don't think the agenda as final action is, is, really anticipates that outcome. I would suggest the better approach would be to bring it back, and if you have to bring it back, you could certainly give that direction to the public, which is we intend to either repeal this or change it, but.
So I think where we are, yes, please.
Well, I think I'm just going to say the same thing you're probably about to say. It's obvious that any vote for approval is going to be three to three, most likely tonight, so whatever, whatever village attorney thinks is the best way to do, it's obvious we're not going to make a decision tonight, right? So you want to disagree with that?
I, I'm not sure.
Three to three when he votes.
No, I, I can't vote if there's a tie.
Right, I think, so that was the issue I was struggling with, trustee Pollak, is, I was trying to think, because usually when the mayor votes, it's to break a tie, but the mayor can also vote when legally required. So the question is, usually the way it's postured is, the mayor's voting, and you have three in favor, and if this were tonight, it would be trustee Pollak voting against, trustee Evans voting against, trustee Gano is voting against, and two voting for it. And then the question is, can the mayor vote? And if, it's just kind of going negatively, I think you still could vote to break, to, because you'd be, you could pass the ordinance, but you've indicated you would vote no. So.
So, this is very, getting very convoluted, and we're going to, hold on a second. It is, because maybe I, and maybe I wasn't clear enough before. If people want to vote against this because they're against term limits, I understand that, that you're right as a representative, it's your right to go on record with it, it's going to eventually end up as a tie, one way or the other. And if it ends up as a tie, I'm going to vote to have this referendum placed on the ballot. So we can protract this over the next weeks and months, and then finally arrive at that point, and I'll make that vote. Or since you know I'm going to make that vote, you can vote tonight, go ahead and put this on the ballot. So that, that decision is up to you.
So we could change your language now, to make it prospective, and then change the date as well?
Yes, the, what's before you, what's before you is to, is to bring it into compliance with the, the state statute, that it has to be prospective, and then it's up to you whether you would also like to change it from the March to the November ballot.
And that change could be made tonight.
And that could be done tonight.
The date, yes.
Mr. Pollak.
Your scenario assumes trustee Gisa's vote.
My, my scenario assumes that trustee Gisa would vote to approve this.
That's why I, I think we might as well table it, quite frankly, because we don't have, it, it's.
I think that would be the best solution.
So can I make that motion?
Um, actually, if we have a consensus, we don't need consensus, there was no motion, so if there's consensus, we'll just bring this back at our next meeting.
Yeah, because it's not a zoning matter, we don't need to worry about a date certain, so.
Okay, thank you all very much. Next up, under considerations, a discussion of the village Riverside five-year financial forecast, 2020 to 2024, Director Johns.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Presented before you tonight is the village's five-year financial forecast spanning fiscal years 2020 to 2024. The purpose of this forecast is to provide the board with information concerning projected revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for all the village funds in the five year period. This forecast should assist in identifying areas and opportunities where revenues and expenditures may be adjusted. Much of the information and data used in preparation of this forecast has been obtained from internal financial records and trend analysis, discussions with the various department managers concerning short-term and long-term expectations, and external sources, including the Illinois Municipal League, Illinois Department of Revenue, and other agencies. Several key features that I wanted to bring out in this report is the property tax levy. Overall, property taxes are expected to increase 1.9% in 2020 from the final 2018 extended levy, and 1.5% in subsequent years. However, the police pension at levy is estimated to increase 3% in 2019 and 5% in subsequent years. This results in the general corporate levy expectations being relatively flat or decreasing slightly in years to come. If you view the graph on page 98 of your board packet, you will see that the police pension fund levy in green has increased dramatically since 2018. The increase from 154,000 in 2001 to 1.4 million in 2020 is approximately nine times increase over 20 years. If you look at the top of page 96, you will see the, the green bar increasingly get larger, which is a police pension proportionate share of the tax levy.
Can I start, because I'm?
I think your page number is.
I'm a page off, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the pagination you're mentioning is not the pagination that I have.
One oh two? The graph, the first graph's on page 94 in our package.
94, yes.
Oh, I, okay. The one I, I got on 94 is the general fund.
Yeah.
I thought she was talking about the police pensions. Oh, the one at the bottom, I got you now, okay. So page 94.
Okay. Apologize for that typo.
No worries.
The state per capita ta, so, I'm sorry. So the graph on the top of page 95 shows that the general corporate levy is actually decreasing over time, the, the proportionate share. The next item I wanted to speak on briefly was the per capita taxes, or LGDF. Have been very unpredictable in collection in the past several years due to decreases in distribution due to state budget cuts. In state fiscal year 2017, the state decreased distribution by 10%, and in 2018, they decreased by 5%. While 2019, they have remained full, we are projecting a very modest increase of 1.35% in the next several years due to the uncertainty of what's going to happen with the state budgets. Make sure I got my page number right, just a second. Okay, on page 98, you will see a graph with building and zoning and inspection fees. The building and zoning fees had several very high years. However, in 2019, we did see this decrease, which was the, the budget and the plan due to the decrease in permits. We've projected very modest increases in years to come, simply due to the, the price of construction going up. Overall, next year, general fund revenues are estimated to increase modestly. The largest area of expenses in the general fund are personnel-related costs. In, our 2020 estimates include 2.75 to 3% increases in union salaries, IMRF increasing from 8.31% to 10.42%, and health insurance benefits increasing 9.4% for the HMO and 10.2% for the PPO. The village continues to evaluate the proportional share allotted to the water sewer fund for general operation costs. I highlighted several items that I would like additional feedback from the board on before.
I, I had one quick question before you move into that, since Director Malkyody's still here. With regard to the recreation program fees on page 98, do those, do those assumptions take into account the, the new capability we have, or going to have with 40th frequency? That that was figured in?
Yes.
Thank you.
It is also included in their expense proportionately.
Okay.
Couple items for discussion before the board tonight. Would the board like staff to review general fund fees? Last year, the board requested staff to review fees, and we adjusted several building and administrative fees, beginning in January of 2019. However, there are some fees, such as liquor licenses, that have not been adjusted in some time. If you would like, staff could do several fee surveys on comparable communities, on those other fee types, and bring those back to the board.
I think I see shaking heads, yes?
For liquor licenses?
For liquor licenses, other small fees, garage permit, sale permit fees, other small licensing fees, we did a lot of our building fees last year, so I wouldn't necessarily recommend looking at those again, but we didn't do a full comprehensive fee, so possibly fees that haven't been evaluated in five to 10 years.
Yes.
Yeah, that sounds good.
On an annual basis, the parking lot fund pays an administrative fee to the general fund for operations. Typically, we increase this by 3% for the cost of personnel on an annual basis. Due to the increased maintenance with the green parking lots, would the board like to increase this to five, this increase to 5% instead of 3%?
I have a question about that. For Attorney Molina, do you, this, this whole issue with the possibility of taxing parking for municipalities?
Oh, the ambiguity in there, yes.
Yes, do, do we know when that ambiguity is going to be resolved? Will that be resolved in the veto session?
I believe it will. I mean, we don't know until it is, but it is one of the key items, because the issue is, is become a high, is a highly visible one.
If, if it turns out that we have to, would that increase our administrative costs?
That would. So that is an item that currently is under review by the Illinois Municipal League, and so they are bringing it forth as part of a trailer build to make some cleanup language as it relates to municipal parking lots, but if for some reason those changes don't take place, I think we're, we're anticipating that they will. However, if they don't, yes, it would increase our administrative costs, but really with regard to, and that would be for returns that we would have to process between the finance and the village accountant, processing those returns, collecting that data, and also changes in how those fees are assessed through our task board, our app for, so there would be a lot of work that would need to be done. I'm hopeful, given some of the feedback that I've received actually today from Illinois Municipal League, that they will be successful in making those changes, and so therefore we won't have to make any changes. We won't know until, I believe, mid-November if it's part of the veto session.
Just so folks watching at home knows what we're talking about, there, there is a proposal that's floating around in Springfield to tax parking in municipalities. So our municipal lots and things like that, we would, we would have to start applying a state tax to, so that's, that's what we're talking about. And the reason I bring it up is, we might need to wait until we have that answered before we can decide what we want to do here, right?
My, my recommendation and suggestion would be, we already know that Public Works is going to be spending additional time, so really the lion's share of the costs associated with the, the charging the, the fee to the parking lot fund is not just for administrative purposes of processing, processing the parking lot payments and doing the accounting and setup. A lot of the work is actually done by Public Works as it relates to maintenance, no plumbing things of that sort that we calculate as part of that fee to the parking lot fund. So I would recommend, we know that the, the cost of maintaining those lots is going to go up probably more than that additional 2% differential that we're looking at, so I would recommend we do the 5% for 2020 regardless, and then we can evaluate it thereafter with the hours that it's taken for Public Works to maintain those particular lots.
Well, we won't be voting this finally until, what, December? The budget itself?
The, the budget itself, the final vote would be December 5th, yes.
So.
We can make those changes, incorporate it, and then.
So if we approve five, or if we recommend five tonight, we can always, if, if something goes the other way, we could raise it appropriately to cover our costs before we do our final vote. Does that make sense to everybody? So at this point, we're okay with the 5%?
Are we talking about parking fees? What, what fee is it?
To maintain the parking lots, all that work is expensed out of the general fund. So there's an interdepartmental service charge that the general fund charges the parking fund on a monthly basis. So it's that administrative fee that the parking lot reimburses the general fund. We're not recommending a change in parking rates at this time.
Thank you.
So you're okay with that? What she's suggesting?
Yeah.
Okay. Next.
Would the board like to adjust water and sewer rates to reflect increases in operational costs? Typically, the board reviews water and sewer rates when we get an increase in the commodity cost from the hook. In 2019, there was no commodity cost increase from the hook, so therefore, we didn't do any rate adjustments, which would cover the increase in wages or benefits to the staff working in those funds. Is that an analysis that you would like to see brought back?
Yes.
An analysis, yeah.
The board would have to vote on a specific rate increase after that analysis is brought back.
I see shaking heads.
Analysis.
For the analysis, yes.
Okay. Would the board like to discuss an additional MFT tax with a maximum of 3% to be implemented this year? Other community, I know North Riverside adopted a 2 cent raise, and I think a couple other communities, I'm sorry, I forgot which ones, have also been discussing it.
It is River Forest, it's in the process, and Indian Head Park, and I believe Lagrange Park is also evaluating it currently.
MFT is motor fuel tax.
Motor fuel tax.
So this, this is a recent change also in Springfield that allows municipalities to add up to an additional 3% per gallon. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Village manager, did you get, have you gotten? Village manager, did you get, have you gotten feedback from maybe impact on the businesses that would be affected by this 2%, 2, 2-cent increase?
I, I have not. I mean, from what I am seeing, it appears, and perhaps President Sells could also speak to any feedback he's received from the conference, the municipal conference, but it appears that many communities will start incrementally implementing this, especially if they have gas stations. The, the potential revenue ranges all over the place. So I don't necessarily think that it would deter business, especially along the Harlem Avenue corridor, the, the 1% to 3% change. So it really just depends on whether or not the board wants to look at that. But with regard to surrounding comm communities and discussing with other village managers, they're looking at it as whether or not it would be a deterrent, or they would see business go down. I know that for those that look to North Riverside and Costco, people are still going to, to go over there. And I guess the other question is, do we position ourselves better, or are businesses in a better position for those that are trying to compete against Costco? And so that's kind of an open-ended item, and you don't necessarily have to approve it for this upcoming fiscal year, so.
And, and I'm sorry, the question was, do we want an analysis about 1%, 2%, or 3% increase?
Would you like it brought back before the board?
I, I'd like to see the analysis on how much that moves the dial.
It's not a percentage, right? It's a, it's 3 cents, up to 3 cents.
I'm sorry. 1, 2, 3 cent again. Yeah, I'm sorry.
No. There's, we don't have much data to go off of as far as the amount of gallons sold at our gas stations. So as far as the net revenue implications, it, other than some basic research saying that at one pump it could sell anywhere, there are a huge range of gas that it could be selling. So the, the financial impact is difficult to perform.
But I had, I, excuse me, so I could follow, but I had asked for you to do an analysis based on the 3, 3 cents, and based on what you found, it's gotta only be like $30,000 or something like that?
We estimated on the, the low end as far as usage, just because we're not sure what that actual sale volume is by our gas stations. But yes, we estimated, I forget if it was between 25 and 35.
I mean, I'm fine, you know, if you want to see the analysis, I think we're probably looking at a relatively small amount of money in terms of receipts. And my personal opinion is balancing that against the negative impact it would have on our businesses. I would want to wait for a while and see, I mean, if it turns out we become an island and we're the only community that hasn't done this, then that might be different, but.
And, and this is more towards what does the analysis say? And my main question was the one you answered, is it a material number, or is it an immaterial number?
And they had the 3 cent per gallon, based on what they were able to estimate, is $25,000 to $30,000 revenues.
And I agree with Manager Francis that there's a competitiveness issue that, that may be larger, you know, that has to be balanced against, an extra $25,000.
So if I may, from, based on Director Johns' research on how many gallons gas stations sells on a monthly basis, the range is from 40,000 to 150,000 gallons per month, so obviously we're talking about a very broad range. However, if we're assuming on the lower end, taking a more conservative approach, she had estimated an additional revenue if we did the, the 3 cents at around 43,000 per year.
There's three gas stations in town?
Yes, part gas station. So that's part gas station, then, 43. You said it was based on?
No, that's, that's.
That's total.
Total.
So the question is, is do you want, I mean, it's gonna be, this is the kind of estimate you're gonna get, because we can't get hard numbers from the state.
It's good enough for me.
So this is good enough for you? To do what?
For the, I mean, for the analysis. Are we having a discussion on whether included or not included? Is that the question?
Yes. Well, the, you.
The question is really, do you want me to bring it back before the final budget is adopted?
So what's the answer to that question? If you're not interested in doing it, we can just say no at this point and savor the work.
I would like to do it.
You would like to do it? Okay. You want to have him bring it back?
I'm leaning against, but I'm happy to bring it back and have a discussion then.
Let's bring it back, and we'll look at it again. And if you're able to get more information, that'd be great.
Yeah. Just for clarification, discussion only, no ordinance drafted or anything of that sort?
Correct.
Okay, sorry.
That's what I mean. Okay. What else you got?
Those were all the items that I wanted additional feedback on for tonight. If there's any questions about the financial forecast, this is one of the, this is the second step in the budget process after the capital improvement plan. So the plan is for the next board meeting to present the preliminary budget document to the board for discussion purposes.
Anything else for Director Johns? Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I could just ask a question. I'm looking at slide 109, five-year financial forecast, and I know this is, this is rough, but this is for the general fund, and I printed it color, I would be seeing, you know, some red numbers in there, and obviously, there's funds that have surpluses, so it's, it's not a matter of solvency or insolvency. I just want to get a perspective of how I should view those, those negative numbers in, in the upcoming years for net surplus, net deficit.
I think the overall item to take away is unless there's significant changes in either revenues or expenses, our expenses are going, projected to increase at a much faster pace than our revenues.
Okay. So I was looking at that exact same thing today, Mr. Hannan, and with regard to the 2019 projection, that's because of the transfer out for, for capital, that's where that, that, so we're actually showing a slight surplus for 2019.
Agreed.
But yeah, when you, when we look forward to 2021 and thereafter, this is, this is the, what we have been talking about for many, many years, and you heard the numbers a minute ago with regard to healthcare. We have a structural problem because of the tax caps. We can only raise revenue by 5% or, through price index, whichever is less, which has been around 1.5% to 2% historically, and we have, our costs are going up in double digits. And that's, that's what we're going to be confronting in your.
And that's how I, I just wanted to make sure I was looking at that the right way.
Unfortunately, yes.
And, and I think it's a good perspective for everybody on the board to look at, you know, what's created by the sales tax revenue, what's created by the parking sticker revenue, put it in perspective, and then go back to this slide 109, and look at, you know, again, this is general fund versus all the funds, and, and we have inter-fund transfers all the time, but you know, this is a cause that we need to, you know, find more sources of revenue, or think about significant cuts, and you know, obviously, the prior board has cut a lot, and you know, as they say, at some point, you start cutting bones, so I just want to make sure we're all taking this upcoming discussion in the right, right sense of urgency.
Yeah, these, these are the numbers that I think about at 3:30 in the morning. Anything else for Director Johns? Thank you very much. We have no new business, we have no need for executive session, so I'd ask for a motion second to adjourn.
So moved.
By Mr. Gallagos.
Second.
By Ms. Peters. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos.
Aye.
Trustee Hannan.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries, means adjourned. Thank you, and good night.